I don't know.
I love it.
That's my name, my greatest year.
I'll be nice.
Eight.
I don't think we're going to go where I'm at.
I'm really talking. They didn't even heard of my masters or special.
When I was like, I just went on.
I did five, six years. And three more in your life, nine years. Very.
Good to go, man.
Yep. I didn't hear him.
You heard that song?
All right, good. I did, I was listening for it, sorry.
All righty, it is now six P M., so we will begin our work study session for April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath, President, Commissioner Banky. Accent. Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts. Present. Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry. Present. Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present with the exception of Commissioner Banky. At this time, I will turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. So when you adopted your strategic plan, which was on September fifth of twenty twenty-three, you set as ten objectives to review it either at six or seven months with the department heads to sort of determine whether there are any modifications you want to make to typically the one-year tasks, but potentially any part of the plan based on our experience to date. So this is seven months. We put on the agenda tonight for that seven-month check-in, and I asked all the department heads to be here either in person or by Zoom. If we have them all one way or the other. They're, they're here as a resource for you as you're going through these things, deciding if you want to stick with these one-year tasks and/or the key objectives, or you want to make some modifications to them in light of our experience to date. The thought what we could do is I can just run through them briefly and give you very brief indication of where we're at, although if anyone needs one, then a couple of extra ones, or we can put it up online. Can you look? We can put it up on the screen, too. That one, one more. But it's not. So you'll recall that we stuck to three major goal areas. The first one was economic growth and vibrancy. Under that, the key objectives were a vibrant downtown, elevated Main Street status, an active marketing program, access to affordable fresh groceries for all city residents, making the city attractive to both businesses and people, and further reduction of light. And then the one-year tasks were implement the revolving loan fund, which we have not done. So as I get to each one-year task, I'll tell you where we're at. We're, we're, we're working through the legalities of implementing the revolving loan fund. You'll recall that you did appropriate money for that purpose, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that purpose, but we've not found a viable means of implementing it yet, I will say. And so that's where that's at. Now, as you know, at our meeting last time, you approved a grant application which went in today for money that would be for a similar purpose, although not a loan, but rather a grant through Mishka. And so we got applied for four hundred thousand dollars from Mishka to support the same goals that the revolving loan fund had. Essentially homeowners who are implicated by property maintenance issues. Well, that was another first one-year task under economic growth and vibrancy. The second was begin the implementation of the Main Street strategic plan in the works.
Yes, and we're actually reevaluating it through our work with McKenna for our new DDA fifth one.
Three was reestablish the city's Brownfield redevelopment authority that has been done. Four was adopt a new leaner zoning ordinance. We are, that is in the works. The contract has been locked with Smith Group. They're working on that, but probably about halfway done with the drafting effort, which we're reviewing at staff level, and the steering committee needs to meet again to review their work product to date. And then the last one-year task under economic growth and vibrancy was develop a job description for the economic development grant writing position, classify and budget for the same. I have budgeted for that position in this upcoming year's fiscal, this upcoming fiscal year's budget. We additionally have partnered with Grant Exec, which I think I told you about, which was recommended to us by GCSI, our lobbyists, as a company that both prospects for grant opportunities and can provide grant writing assistance on a hourly basis. So with the combination of our intention to bring back the economic development coordinator's position, for which there is already existing job description, and then that grant writing support, hopeful that that combination of things will address that one-year task. Under number two is improve quality of life. Key objectives, that was goal number two, key objectives, improved housing availability, active art scene, reduce the impacts of unhoused homelessness within the city, reduce crime subcategories, serve high-risk warrants, pivot personnel, public engagement. One-year tasks under improved quality of life were first, enhance code enforcement, develop a hierarchy of enforcement issues. That is still a work in progress. Two, adopt and authorize ordinance for residential pilot plans. That is also still in progress. Three, get the mural project going, partner with current art programs. How's that going, Judge?
We're just waiting on one more response from a, from the property owner's attorney, and we will then be submitting our call for artists to put our first mural out. The Monroe, maybe the meeting moving on quite a little.
Yeah. Next was form a task force for park issues. We did that in twenty twenty-three. The Parks and Recreation Director, Police Chief, and I had some decent success in twenty twenty-three. Those issues are recurring this year. And so on staff meeting this morning, we actually talked about reconvening, strategizing for the twenty twenty-four version of that. And that's, that one's done. And then the last one-year objective under that category, goal category, was the police department to deploy license plate readers that and train six new hires. That is still in the works. I can't see Zoom, so I don't know if that's on there. Are you on Zoom, Beth?
He's on his way back there.
Okay. He can tell you the status of that one.
Block cameras?
Block and six new hires.
Ah, very difficult to find applicants. We don't have any done, so still finding the pavement. I created another job post this morning online, hoping that we get some applications. But right now, we have none in process. Block cameras, I had an exchange last week, and every month we get an update that says, maybe this is the month. And then it's not, and the next month we get another one saying, maybe this is the month. So right now, we still have two cameras active out of ten that we tried to get installed. And what they're saying is that once they get them all installed, they want to essentially give us a free year, the following year. They want to figure out what that prorated amount should be and then not charge us for the following. So that's, that is where we are. I'm not sure how much longer to wait on that, actually. How long until we, we take some kind of action, but it's been a few months. Every month they say, well, we're working with M dot, M dot's going to approve. They, they're going to release the approvals so that those can be put up, and then there is no change, so.
Good, Chief. Third goal category was enhance community image. Key objectives under that category were more bilingual staff, create a full-time communications, marketing position to develop an active citizen communication and education program, improve lighting citywide as needed for safety purposes. We develop a viable transportation system. One-year tasks were develop a job description for communications, marketing position, classify, budget for the same. Then you had a question, what would this person do? Number of potential items underneath that. That, I would say, is something I would like to talk to you about tonight in light of our budget constraints that we have with the current, or well, the upcoming as proposed fiscal year budget. Research bilingual education opportunities for current staff. Not much has happened on that, although we were able to hire a bilingual staff member when the Deputy Clerk's position went vacant. We published that as having a strong preference for someone with proficiency in Spanish, and we were able to find essentially native Spanish speaker to fill that role. I will note that in that process, that's an entry-level position, so accessible really to virtually anyone, no advanced degree is required. We got, of all the applicants we got, we got two applicants who indicated some ability with Spanish. One was truly proficient, the other one was not. The person who is proficient who we hired came to us from Texas. We're not able to find any, any local to fill that position who have that qual, those qualifications. For that process. FYI in that regard. Review and assess the community academy and plan for the future. Have done that and are planning to conduct that again this year. Develop an enhanced reporting of burned-out streetlights and a marketing campaign to explain the process. Anything going on with that, Matt?
It is posted on our website, and people can use it. It's just three clicks, and, and I actually just did it again today, so it's very easily accessible.
Okay, so pretty good. And request the current plan for future growth of transportation from the Transportation Authority. It's yet to be done. And then research how to attract Uber, Lyft, et cetera. I have done some research on that, not very promising to date. Essentially talks about generating demand as a way to attract those services to the community. So the next step might be what was suggested in the survey. But it's essentially an enticement process, trying to demonstrate that there's a demand for it and almost places that have successfully done it have sort of subsidized a driver to kind of get it going. So, and I think that's in the works.
I just want to drive this from Arizona.
Oh, yeah, really?
So Google is trying.
And you survived?
I did. Google is creating driverless vehicles.
Maybe a better starting point than a bus.
I live.
So that's, that's a review of what you had set forth, so we're here to talk about any of those one-year tasks or other key, are the key objectives that you want to talk about? I particularly would like you to discuss the communications marketing piece, though. Although we can't see her, Michelle is online. Well, Michelle is currently our person who does, who's assigned a role of communications and marketing in addition to her duties of subsequently assistant. And so she's here as a resource for you to have that discussion. And the rest of us are as well. Or on any of the points or any other points that you think retrospect should be in there. And I'll turn it over to new commissioners. We devoted most of the pre-meeting to this topic tonight, so you have until oh, probably another half hour to go through this. Well, I'll keep talking since nobody else is. On the communications and marketing piece, a point that might be of interest to you is the L D F A has expressed an interest of having their own marketing person. Marketing as opposed to communications. And, but they don't want that to be a full-time position, so there may be an opportunity there. Partner with them on a marketing person for him to do marketing as a case of being to get some additional capacity. The, as we talked about during the budget workshop, there is not money available from recurring sources to add another full-time position at this point. I did add some money to the marketing budget, not enough to constitute a person. I, I originally had planned to include an extra fifty thousand dollars in the marketing budget, cutting that down to additional ten, so twenty total. As we went through around the budget cuts to try to get the budget balanced this year. There's a little more capacity in there for contract-type services, but we're not another full-time staff person.
I'd be interested in seeing us go to contract to get a start. I think it's a very good beginning. A lot of people use those, those firms that, that come in and work, do a presentation, and do an hourly after that. I think it's a good way to get started.
Exactly, what are we going to market?
How to find a police officer?
And, I would say, that's a good.
Well, you know, that's an interesting problem for the L D F A as well. Well, they have some properties for sale, and this that's more true in the country than it is here. We only have and that's maybe only two sites. That I'm developing. So separate from that, and when we did some of our analysis in this regard, it was the community image. Focus on the market. Trying to let people know we're here while things go on. Some ways it's a little, I, I would say, a little early because we got a lot we're working on. Lot more to sell.
I know, I know one thing that, you know, I, I think another, just another example of how much it makes a difference is just watching what's happened with DDA Main Street since they had the intern that was like focused on that marketing and that communication, and they, they just, there's a lot, there's a lot more people knowing what's going on with DDA. They're understanding, they're seeing it, there's people, a lot of people commenting. It is that image, and it's been a huge jump in people paying attention to what's happening downtown and what's going on just by the work that that intern did. So, you know, if, you know, maybe it's something where it's even like an intern on our side of it. Maybe it's where it's part contract, part intern, I don't know. You know, is this something that like if, if we did, you know, contract that out, do we even have the money for that? Is this something where we can go into dip a little bit into the surplus? I just feel this is very vital and needed right now, especially that communication piece, that, that community image, just that, that I think that piece is, is there. And, and maybe that's Michelle, and that she just goes in that direction. I'm just saying, I don't care what it looks like, I just want to know. I'm not saying I'm opinionated on where it could be, but you know, just to make sure that happens. I'm very passionate about seeing it in some capacity, even if it's not full capacity we want.
So like I said, for contract services, in, in the closed budget, we have twenty thousand. Obviously, you've still got Michelle and you've got her doing what she does. And maybe we should just ask her at this point for her thoughts on that, or, you know, if you can hear, if you can hear us, Michelle, what, anything you want to share in this regard? Thoughts that you have in hearing the commission goal of that or closed task that they have with strategic plan for the overall goal in that regard?
Sure. Can everybody hear me? Sorry, me is enough.
Yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, so obviously, this has been a discussion for a long time, and as you all know, there's a lot of different pieces to my position. I can certainly do more on the communications and marketing side. That's obviously up to you all and Greg, but there is definitely a lot more we can do there. I, I would say the goal is, you know, a government agency, and it's more a communication than marketing, but your goals would be probably to increase, you know, awareness about the programs and resources that we have at the city, about our services, improve community relationships, and obviously improve transparency. A lot of that can be done through social media. You know, we started the weekly newsletter, which I think is helpful, but we do have the issue of not everyone's online. So I think maybe going back to some quarterly print newsletter-type materials that go out to everyone. There's a lot of things we can do on our end to improve that. How much we do, you know, is like, so that's kind of up to you. Contract services. It just depends on how much you want to spend. I guess my suggestion would be to maybe, you know, come up with a communications and marketing plan so you can get an idea of what it is that you want to do exactly, and then kind of go from there. There are companies out there that can analyze, you know, what we do well and what we need to improve on and kind of give us some guidance there that, that might be a good start, too. But I'm open to reach to whatever you all would like to do.
The municipality, or you know of any other communities our side are contracting someone that could say, you know, this is where we were since where we've come. You know, many of the marketing agencies fit to the municipalities or that, and that, you know, where we can see what, what has happened. I, you know, marketing is not my specialty, so I would rather seek a marketing firm to help me create a marketing plan than be created. Because what we've heard a lot in clear is communication is, is the issue. So regardless of what we've done in my time on the commission, we're not successful at that. So I would like to find someone to help us with that. So I think utilizing a firm to help us with that is going to be key to teaching us what we're doing, like Michelle said, what we're doing well, what we're not doing well.
Dave, from the Main Street side, I know. Well, first of all, why don't you tell us a little bit about what Main Street has done for you? You know, and are any of those consultants available more broadly?
You're talking about technical, certainly the technical services, are we, is? Yeah. So every year, we were able to receive a technical service from Main Street. Last year was branding, and they really came in, ran and gave us a communication plan, gave us kind of a social media plan. It was very simple. Every month has a theme, every week has a, every day of the week has a theme to go with that month. And so you, you build out your calendar that way. When Ashley came in, our intern came in, we, we gave that to her and focused on certain things. We also focused on the storytelling aspect, and we started launching that. We have twenty-five stories that are coming out once a week, connecting with businesses downtown to really show that one-out-of-one relationship with business owners in the community. Main Street has other services that they, that they were able to engage with. I don't know if there's any more specific with marketing, and I can certainly reach out to my peers and other communities similar to our size, or even smaller, to see what they're doing. But Main Street, any of those, any of those consultants are available to us. We can reach out to them anytime.
Are they local? Were they national?
Um, Bill, the storyteller, was, was local, he, well, Michiganese from Bay City. Our branding was from South Carolina. They're, they're all over the place. The person I'm working with right now that's helping us with our ready-to-recruit, he's from Tennessee. So they're not necessarily local, but they, something like this can be somewhat remote, depending on how you approach it.
Those are partners of the Main Street.
Of the Michigan Main Street organization, yeah. I mean, there's other things to consider. I'll give you an example, so there's an individual who's local that does social media marketing for businesses. And like, one of the things she charges like she charges like two hundred dollars a month for two to three posts per week on different social media channels. So you, I mean, there's people that do those kinds of things locally on a contract basis. You just have to have conversations with them.
So what are for so far? My thought, let's try to add some capacity on a contract basis.
Well. We're seven months and on one year, right? I like things that are specific and measurable, but I want to make sure that these things are also a theme. So if we're setting this goal, I think before we say what we're in, let's be very specific of what we want this position to be. I heard some ideas from Commissioner Castleberry, but what, what do we actually want this? Is it to bring people or make people more aware from outside of Adrian? Or is it to make things better or more informed or higher levels of communication with people from inside of Adrian? I think that's something we should discuss to decide what are we going to do first? Are we going to look for bringing people in and showing so that if they're not settling here, maybe we just give people a visit, go to our local businesses, come in, see our community and make praise about it? Or are we able to say we've got to do a better job of what we currently are not doing? And then make a goal that's specific, because we've only got five months. Five months, this has to be done, and we have to measure it at three months, see where we're at.
Well, what, what I would suggest is a controllable five-year goal might be what Michelle suggested, have a community or planning. That will tell you, you know, what resources need to achieve. That's good.
Like our one-year task is what would this person do? So that's our one-year task, right?
Yeah, five months to get it done.
So I, I would.
Well, it took one-year task was more than that, and pretty much I've told you, I don't intend with this budget to achieve your one-year task, because we haven't budgeted for a full-time person to do that. We have budgeted some money. And we have already in our existing budget funded to the, for a person that does that. So maybe what we want to do is evolve this task into, just what I said, the development. This first year, that will be a guided document for that effort.
And I think basically that what I said, let's figure out here what we actually want. Not that it's done or it's completely, this is what we're going to do in this, our one year. Given that right now we can't afford a full-time person to come in. Right?
Other thoughts on that concept?
I, I think it's a good concept, but I think I, I'm not a marketer for cities. I've done some marketing at different institutions, but. I've done some marketing at different institutions, but, um, developing, as work said, our main objectives of what we want to get out of this is going to be really key. Before we can move anything forward with a, an intern or even a marketing like, um, marketing company to come in and give us an idea of what it might cost. We're going, yeah, we're really going to have to know what we want. So if we look at our key objective, create a full-time communications, marketing position, develop an active citizen communication education program. So if we change position to potentially a firm, we need to research what their position or if that is a firm. But our, our goal was to develop an active citizen communication. Right? So looking to firms to show or teach us how to do that better, because that's what we have been hearing. I know that's what we talked about in this planning session was communication has been key. Communication has been the issue, um, since I've been a commissioner, um, we are not reaching our own citizens. Like I think that's where we need to start, for sure. Breaking it down, break it down real and then reaching out to companies and what can you do for us if these are goals? Yeah.
Separate and balance other specific goals and we reach out to companies that that narrow the work mode is actually there. We're not like ready to shoot anything that's really being applied.
But I think we need, because none of us are marketers, we need to be open to hear from marketing professionals, yes, because we could be putting down on paper X, Y, and Z and they're like, yeah, that's not gonna work. You need to be doing A, B, and C.
I don't know, but I think that we will identify city patron. They may clearly what they're looking for, uh, are the same, aren't both. At some firm called outside the city, say, oh, you even exist, that's, they don't know my name or people that I associate with, or people that I follow, I do.
Okay, did I give us some direction on that? I think, I think it's that. Are there other things we wanna talk about here? There are other, uh, one-year tasks, but
um, with, hold on, no words coming out of my mouth. The zoning rewrite, you said you believe it's about a half, halfway done? Do we have a target date for when that's actually going to be presented to us?
Uh, it probably won't come to you and probably won't be this year.
End of this year? Okay.
When do you think the steering committee's gonna meet again?
I would think in about a month. There was supposed to send us more content, be able to staff. We, we viewed some things, but the, the content didn't show up, so.
Four to six weeks.
I, I, I don't quite know what their strategy is, whether they're trying to finish it before the steering committee meets again, but in terms of the chapters of the ordinance, the majority of them are drafted. So I would, I would think that would be reasonable. But in any, I do, we do. It, it is under contract. This task is under contract, was slipped through, you know, around the hutch to do it. One though, get it. What we expected when they started would be to be ready by the end.
What's our biggest roadblock or struggle with, uh, home improvement loans, uh, two hundred fifty thousand?
Uh, you wanna tackle that one more?
You can't use general fund money to, you can't be a bank. And so it's not as simple as just creating a public loan fund, because that's tax dollars. So you have to look at grants, other things I've discussed with Greg, some of this, because we did it, but prior to getting brown code for. Um, there may be a way, but it's not as simple as saying general fund money can be modeled out.
When we used to have a housing department, uh, what it, it did that, that exact thing, but it did it with CDBG funds, so he just received. He no longer receives, or does anyone, as I understand it, that's not an entitlement community. And in fact, this program that we just applied, Mishna, for is sort of their rethinking of how they're gonna distribute CDBG bodies throughout the state. So trying to get in on brown code with that. And that is meant to be a pipeline that comes back year after year. And so it may be that we're successful with that. And then, you know, and we can, I, I, I think their intent is if you get it one year, that you continue to get it. And so if we're successful at that, that may be a substitute for it to evolve. I'd be great to see if we're successful. And then you wanna add to that, Jay?
No, that's exactly. The CDBG funds went to that, they allocated thirty-three million dollars to non-entitled communities to use for that purpose. So that's where, and it covers different things, but, um, it's rehab, it's, it's new construction. There's very, there's various programs that are moving there.
So you could have a reviving long, you just can't fund it.
Right. But I almost, if we get that, you know, I almost would like to see that take place, that's, and move on. I think that's a big.
Well, I think it's two different things.
Well, it, it functions as a grant instead of a loan. They don't allow you the loan. So, but it's for the same purpose.
I guess my thought is, when you're dealing with grant funding, there are gonna be people that won't be able to fulfill the requirements, but you still would want a reviving long fund if you could find a way to do it. If I just had to find a funding source that is not.
If we had.
Still looking, yes.
If we had donors, that would be okay?
Yes.
Well, I think, you know, it could potentially be, uh, sources of funds, money being fungible, if you plug in the money you have appropriated in the general fund somewhere else where we require to use non-general fund money.
That's thorough, that's a separate.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think their scope is broad enough to cover what we wanted this to cover. For example, when we get, like, the enhancement grant. To the degree, not studying this, but broadly, I think they are for light remediation. So to the degree that this is an aspect of light. And if we were to plug money we've appropriated to this purpose into what those monies were supposed to go for and instead apply those grant monies to this program. Um, you know, for example, that would be, oh, the problem that you're gonna come in to get into with that, or with the use of any kind of grant, is that they always have time limit. And this wasn't, I can't time limit, it's kind of evolve over, you know, in perpetuity. You know, something like, uh, grant.
And last one, is it? Typically, they're not.
Yeah, typically, even back then, a hundred dollars. And I guess they were, because those loans went out of the law.
Well, I think we all agree, we like that. What we're intending to do with it, just have to find that way to do it. I think it's a great idea.
Right, we talked about, I just, I, all right. Yeah. Because I just kept thinking the same thing in this, like, when we talk about code enforcement. You said we didn't do that, but we at one point kind of did a hierarchy of rental properties, we were getting a bidding of rental properties. But as we look at this, sorry, I'm going to seven degrees, but we look, we look at talking about this revolving loan, running code enforcement and developing a hierarchy of enforcement, is there any way we put a plan together that way?
Well, so, you know, in a sense, there was a hierarchy and we focused particularly on rentals and sort of the zero and powers or landlords, like, you know, like, the property maintenance bill violations, not so with owner occupied. We were kind of holding in advance, waiting for the boat. You know, now we hope that we're successful, that we'll have grant funds to deploy in that same way. So we can focus on it. All right, private properties that are running foul with property maintenance. Have an alternative program deployed.
Well, they look at this, we've accomplished quite a bit of this. Or at least have started. You know, something in the works.
Yeah, and I mean, it's all achievable with the one, I think, with one exception.
Now, one of the things you've talked about with housing, is, uh, going to be addressed through the ordinance rewrite. Because more people will be able to build smaller homes, um, properties and not have many setbacks.
Well, you have, it's like, every property will have potential for greater, greater downside. Right? Any property could support two units, one support one. Make, to the degree there are vacant properties, those will be able to support more than that. You know, and we're, and we're doing things about that, right? The B R A is facilitating the redevelopment of Dixby site, fifty-three housing. That's a lot of units to add in one year's, potentially one year's time. In the city of our size. That was facilitating through a lot of efforts and to establish a ground building. As we look at infill sites to the degree that are available, and there aren't that many that we can follow, but there are, uh, sides. Having them, you know, if they're in, within a neighborhood. The, the, what, what is really meant by this in the house, it's that you build a unit that looks like the neighborhood. It's in scale with the neighborhood, but has more units than, than, than a single family. Place a single man called, it looks the same visually, but there's more places that. So that's what, that is what the zoning, what it's pretty valuable about.
And we have very few properties that is made in.
Yeah, we probably have about five or six residential lives, you know, we've got. And I showed them all to Alan, that was what I first came to. But there's, you know, there are kind of a subdivision. You don't say that, no, that's not, you know, and by the way, the so-called Jackson one hundred is being built by a subdivision. Developer of subdivisions. We don't want single-family homes going on in the lots. We want more units.
Jackson had a lot of things that Adrian does not. They, I don't exactly know how, but they get like, they, they received over thirty million dollars in market funds. We received two point one. So they were able to put in a lot of money to this program that we just don't have access. Supporting with, they do, uh, hire a housing developer, or a housing director, created their own housing program. Don't have the funds.
They're also entitled, you know, we're assuming. Finding these last, you don't put a single house on there, you put a house that fits the neighborhood. Yes, three or four, potentially three or four families living. And that was kind of the way that they were seeing. Be very active in the communities of ours.
Yeah, they also talked about zoning rewriting. So that, that was one of the big things for M N L conference was. Make sure your zoning is rewritten and easy to use and and inviting and can be used for housing development. Or no?
My concern is that overwriting the number. Enforcement, law enforcement. I mean, we can only get one app within, not even an app in posting. I mean, that, that, that's a high level concern. And the fact that we're getting, for lack of a better term, a runaround of licensed plate leaves that bothers. And I think somehow we need to address, hey, this is what we had, this is what our promise was, this is what you're not. Maybe, you know, I don't, I'm forceful with that, communication with them, but, you know, your words, your word.
I think recruiting police goes back to what we were talking about with marketing. I have people call all the time about university jobs, you know, what is Adrian like? Oh, they went online and they can't find with any information that is pertinent, what they're wanna find out about Adrian, or in Leavenworth County. Uh, it's flawed and our, our ability to change the marketing aspects for the, for how we can market this, this community, uh, to, yes, support the people that are here, but also people that are on the outside that wanna come in.
That's pieces of those that relates to public safety. Great difficulty in getting people to go in and out with. Well, that's kind of the time we had for this part of the agenda. And you can have one other item. Good rest. Is there anything else on the strategic plan while we're on it, while we move on there? Feel bad for all the private heads who came. We did get to speak for Kristen's own personal. They have a goal for, they could have one-year task for her. You have one of mine, we can give you one.
Yeah, I don't know.
You, you want half a person to go out and visit, uh,
Yeah.
properties.
Yeah, so every five years, we're supposed to visit every property in the city of Adrian. But they want you to accomplish twenty percent of that on a annual basis, which is really difficult when there's only one staff member that goes out and does any field work like that. So I would love to have at least a half person that could assist in visiting properties, taking pictures, checking measurements and and that just helps with the efficiency of our, you know, our records and everything like that as well.
So if we have a person, for example, doing point-of-sale inspections that was already out there, they could do that too.
They could, they could just get, um, there's a Michigan certified assessment technician certification that you can get within, I think it's two days and then you have to take a test. Um, and so as long as you have that certification, you keep up that renewal annually, then you can go out and complete that type of stuff.
No.
Are those assessments, uh, interior and exterior?
Generally just exterior. Um, most times when you go out to a property, your hope is that you get to. Most times when you go out to a property, your hope is that you get to talk to the homeowner and you can ask about the interior. But you don't really have to do an interior inspection on a residential property. Obviously, commercial and industrial are a little bit different of situation. Um, but if you can, you know, find out how many bathrooms, bedrooms, is the basement finished? Um, you know, are there built-ins in the kitchen, that kind of stuff, you can usually get that just by talking to the homeowner.
All right, uh, so our other item for the pre-meeting agenda was a discussion regarding, uh, support for certain anti-bathing legislation. A couple of commissioners asked, uh, what was the pre-meeting agenda? Fisher Schwartz, you want to?
Well, I had just received, um, some information that I passed out of the commission about some, um, legislation being proposed. About really cutting down and, um, stopping vaping and teenagers, kids and things like that. And about the use of, I think we've heard when we talk about vaping, you know, the flavor it, so it's nice and it becomes more attractive to a younger audience that it's really not targeted for because they're underage. And so they sent that out, so I sent the communications I received there. And I think Senate, uh, it, it's up for legislation to send it, but I think they were just looking like if we could just do some support there, maybe a proclamation that would support. The restricting use of vaping in children and, I don't even say children, they're high school students or maybe some younger, some yet not aging. The stuff that, you know, personally, I can tell you my dad died. It's poor. And if we can do anything that stops one person or two people or a thousand. From. Access to and use of, or an idea that that's a cool thing to do, I think it's well worth. Just a simple proclamation or something that we talked to the Senator Bolino about, that, you know, tell us what this legislation really is, what do you see about it? Well.
Matt, do you know, there's a group, there used to be a group at the high school, it used to be through communities and schools. That got together once a month, I know that the sheriff's department helped, um, they were there. It was a group of kids that it wasn't just anti-bathing, they did, you know, anti-alcohol things. If there is a group of kids locally at a high school, I think bringing them in, celebrating what they've done and doing a proclamation would be. Kids involved in government a little bit, it, it shares our thoughts on this. And it does all the things and it brings kids in to this whole. Positive whenever you can get the kids involved too. I don't know if it's still there or if it's still operating, but. Yeah, I'd be curious to know if that's something.
That's just why I kept on, so this is kind of important and, and I don't think it's just a personal thing, I think we've all been touched by people.
I struggle a little bit because this is a state issue and whether we as city commissioners should be weighing in on state issues. I don't, you know, I'm just not sure where I feel about that, but I just want you to know that it's a, a thought that runs through my head like. That really are purview to, as a commission, individuals, absolutely, absolutely. Individuals should be contacting their, um, senators and congressmen or anything that comes in front of the state. But as a state commission, is that, is that our job? I don't know.
I don't know if it's a job or not, but I don't see how we're restricted because we're state commission for pushing our opinion to what's going down in our state. We are a likely vision.
I don't think we're restricted.
I'm not saying it's our job, I'm saying somehow it doesn't deny us the opportunity to make a statement.
Resolution or proclamation, Mayor would like to do a proclamation. Do you think would be more appropriate?
I would take a little plea, proclamation might be, because it's talking about what's happening.
I'll see it, I'll see it at Sam's, your group, may at least include that. And we could still do a proclamation, but I just, but if there is a group, so we could share a proclamation.
I think too. The I S D has things that go along with that. I think it's, maybe Adrian might be part of what's happening with the county, why not?
I agree with Commissioner Roberts. I get requests from time to time for various organizations that have interest in what's going on in Lansing and bills and asking. The city commission would take a position on that, and my answer's always been, now that's not what we do. I can, you know, tell me what you want and I can send a letter of support myself, but I'm pretty much agree. It's, it's a state issue, it's a national issue, and I'm not sure that as the commission, we should be taking those positions. I think we need to understand what's going on, I think we need to learn more about the bills. But I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with mission payments.
And that's where we can agree that it's. Because I see it, whether it's a national, state issue, I see it as an issue inside our city as well.
Yeah, it's one of the many issues that we are tending to chase. We're not finding solutions at the right time, we're chasing and trying to catch up. Now, with a lot of these problems and concerns, and I think if we put a positive, uh, statement out, uh, from the commission, uh, not taking any sort of. Political stand, but I think that for us to say something about it is not, I'm not opposed to that. I think we need to be, uh, speaking for our citizens, they bring up these things, we're concerned about it. The commission, we're concerned as a city, so I think, I think if we can do something with, uh, with all the schools, Lenawee County maybe, or just Adrian. Well, and, and I understand what you're saying, but I don't want it to just be a bunch of happy talk. What action will we take? If we're gonna, if we're gonna say that we support those bills, what action can we take locally to make that difference?
Well, I think start with enforcement. We already have laws and.
I know, I know, we're short, gonna be short six or eight off of.
What I'm saying, but I think that's where you start. I mean, we got alcohol stains. And that's just not done by Adrian, that's done by state county resources. We say, hey, maybe this needs to be a priority too.
I'm not saying it can't be, it's not just like, you know, what my insurance is.
No, that's, I'm just. It's, we're all in the same sandbox, still get along with half the country.
We make, going to make an assumption that we all agree that people under eighteen shouldn't be baby. What would you do about it? That might be the disagreement, and for me, you said you just sent the bills to us.
I did send the stuff, but the bills are on the.
I, I've read.
Twenty-one.
Or twenty-one, twenty, I don't see it, I, I don't have anyone that I know that vapes and I don't know the laws, so before I can say I support the laws, I would need to know. And I did try and Google it and I found some, but I wasn't quite sure.
Most of the support's coming from, I see health institutions. When I was looking at all the things, I didn't see like a government, true government, like city of something like that. That's why I was thinking, whether it's just a proclamation or something like that.
Possibly if this group does still exist, saying, you know, we applaud the efforts they're putting forth. Against, you know, vaping for teenagers. If that's what they're doing, you know, like looking back as well, and just recognize their efforts as well.
Well, for concluded on that, Mayor.
Yep.
About time for public travel.
Our lady, at this time, we'll begin public comment, we will start inside the city chambers first. Just to reiterate, there's a three minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address. And when we have exhausted all public comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to all Zoom participants.
Hi, I'm the old Lenaway four two three Elm Street. I'd like to thank anyone who helped in the effort of closing down a drug house. There's a really big dumpster out there overflowing, so if, and this is a rental property. Uh, and I make a point of thanking the guys loading up, thanking the court officer who was there. And interview her instrumental because I thought this was going to drag on for months, it was in a month, but you know. They've married eight copies, I hope all of them gave a big one back and also to the rhino. So within two weeks, they're out of there. So in, um, closing up on this issue, if this, this is a rental and if this, um, landlord concern, which is out of state by the way, they're headquartered in Delaware. So I need to go inside that residence and make sure it's clean from top to bottom. Because I was talking with the landlord from next door and I met Gordon's lawnmower man. And we were even finding needles and all kinds of stuff, so this was a, a job well done. And it won't be completely done until this never happens again. So it's on our law enforcement and a law guy there with the glasses pushed back.
Thank you guys so much.
Okay, my name's Tim Bakewell, I live at, you know, on Canterbury Street in Adrian. And I just wanted to come and, uh, express my unhappiness with the city, especially the city planning commission, commission that feels betrayed by the city. Uh, this project that Adrian Health College has going on in my backyard. It's going to be this huge monstrosity, I will no longer be able to go out in my backyard and see anything but this huge dome. They began construction today, I would encourage you folks to take the drive through the neighborhood and see just how close this thing is to the houses. Some houses are what, twenty-five feet? I mean, it's ninety feet tall, three hundred feet by five hundred feet. I'm real unhappy about this. I'm tired of Adrian College running roughshod over my neighborhood. And now if my taxes from the value of my home goes down, I'm going to be even more upset. You know, I'm not done with this, I'm looking at other avenues that I can use to fight. I will, maybe I'll see you again soon, but this thing is incredible. Drive through my neighborhood, take a look, if any of you know where my neighborhood is.
My name's Jill Bakewell, I live at fifteen oh one Canterbury, you know. And I don't know if you guys have seen the site plans or the aerial view of where this dome is going, but it is literally going to loom over our homes. Do you want me to pass this around? Anybody want to see it? I went on the, uh, site plan reviews requirements today, four point six. Uh, site plan review and approval. And this says, the site plan procedure is hereby established for the city of Adrian, the purpose of the site plan is to determine compliance. The provisions set forth herein and to promote an orderly development of the city, the stability of land values, investments. In gen, in the general welfare and to help prevent impairment or decrepitation of land values, development of the erection of structures. Or additions or alterations thereto without proper attention to sighting and appearances. A bunch of other stuff too. But, um, and then another point was for any proposed site plan review dealing with regi, residential developments. I don't know if this pertains to Adrian College or not, written notice will be delivered by mail or personally to all persons. To whom any real property within three hundred feet of the premises is in question is assessed to the occupants of all single. And two family dwellings within three hundred feet of the premises in question, a notice shall be given at least three days prior to adhering. We heard nothing, we saw nothing, there was a three sentence blurb in W L E N news online. And it said that this project would probably begin, what did it say, in, um, in the fall?
Could start as early as the fall.
It started today. And. Um, and like Tim said, our property values are going to go down. Another thing is if Adrian College was not allowed to buy up everything, and I hear you guys talking about the budget here today and communication. If Adrian College wasn't allowed to, to do this and buy up houses all around Charles Street, Canterbury, Brentwood. That are all, you're getting no tax revenue from them and our tax money is being used. To help Adrian College. That's the way I feel.
My name's Richard Blondie, I live at one five zero nine Canterbury Street. Uh, I'm here to address the same things that, uh, that they both built. I don't know. How do you can allow something like this, realize. It seems like to me, and I've only lived here seven or eight years, but I've been coming down here thirty years to protect kids from the college here. It always seems like whatever your college wants, Adrian College does. And I almost feel a lot of the document, college action folks in this back pocket. And I'm just very disappointed. I've been a city commissioner, I've been a county commissioner. Uh, I've been a mayor of the community that I used to live in. I wish you did, and are concerned. President, that's how they feel and what they do. Uh, just one last thing I speak to the bad, uh, two weeks prior to the, uh, pandemic, spoke to the mayor. That he's talking about addressing the subject the next day, I think, with every week.
Name is Suals, I live at one seventy-five Canterbury, common theme. We did not find out about this until the Lenaway Voice newspaper wrote an article about it. Um, I Googled, the telegram didn't have anything, W L E N had a very good article about it. What, a quote I wanted to share says from that meeting, which we've been unable to obtain the video from that meeting, we've been down to the city, my husband. And I've also emailed and we've been told it will be put on the website as soon as the I T person gets it. But the April second meeting is there, all the meetings prior are there, so we're not really sure why. My husband was told the other day by Jeremiah that we could, um, foil things. So the transparency part feels really frustrating to us as residents. This is the quote, um, that W L E N put in their article. A few planning commissioners noted that there is a neighborhood nearby and that the dome would change their backyard views drastically. The, there was another comment, hold on, let me just find it. I can't find it right now, oh, at the meeting, apparently some of the planning commission members noted, um, I think it was Mr. Jacobit said. No amount of shrubbery will cover that up. And, um, I just want to leave you with, when people in our community drive by our neighborhood. We feel real strongly that all of the commissioners, whether it's, you don't know that it's how the line goes, did this, did the city commission discuss this? Or was it just the planning commission, but we want you to know that if this continues and goes on, that we hold the commissioners personally responsible. Um, because you had ownership in this decision.
Twist the knife while we're at it here. Um, Jared Tim, uh, Adrian, Michigan. Uh, I'd like to express my concern regarding the potential misuse of consent agendas in our city's proceedings. Uh, while I appreciate the intent to streamline meetings, recent practices have raised significant legal and ethical questions with me. Consent agendas are designed to, for routine matters, not as a shortcut for contentious issues. When complex or controversial items are buried within them, it undermines transparency and public trust. Moreover, it may violate legal requirements for open decision making and public participation. This exposes the city to legal risks and erodes confidence in our government. I urge the commission to ensure consent agendas are used appropriately, reserving them solely for routine matters. Upholding transparency and public engagement is essential to maintaining the integrity of our democratic process. On the subject of density from the strategic plans night, we do need missing middle housing. You know, changing subject here. But there's a lack of discussion on mixed use development. If we densify areas, it's not going to result in safer or more vibrant neighborhoods at all. If, you know, shops, coffee shops, parks, stores, restaurants. You know, all of the amenities people like, public spaces are far from these neighborhoods. So that means everybody's going to hop into a car and drive. So we should move towards a form-based code, which Greg did kind of touch on with the denser, like, you know, the multifamily homes and whatnot that just match the the neighborhood vibe. It's just, it's the same thing. A form-based code is you can put a coffee shop here. It just can't look like a Starbucks, right? It has to match the aesthetic. So like, if it was in my old neighborhood, in the historic district, it would have to look, you know, Victorian or something along those lines. That's how we will kind of move forward, I think, as a city. Thanks.
Hearing no more public comment. Inside the chambers, we will now open it up to Zoom participants.
Can't tow cars, 110 South Blokus, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So I received my FOIA request in regards to the code enforcement officers and the credentials that they have. One of the officers has and has been credentialed for most of, most all of his career, and I applaud the city for that. What I question though is the second officer or code enforcement inspector who does not have any credentialing. The gentleman has been here for several years and he has no certifications to go in, inspect homes. And let alone on top of that, that person is condemning buildings, which in my opinion should be the building official. We expect Chief Emrick to have certified police officers. We also expect Eric, Chief Massingill, to have certified firefighters. In regards to code enforcement, that's under Greg Elliott's. And Greg has told you on several occasions that he is a lawyer. So I guess I'm not a lawyer, but I would think that if the city is going to send someone to represent the city in a court of law, that that person should have some type of credentialing. I'm hoping that the city commission will take action and get this resolved. Thank you.
This is Lynn Punnett. I live at 9845 Newburgh Road in Tecumseh. And I just wanted to comment tonight on the discussion around vaping. At the Ebyde Center at Comstock School, we have offered education to the community on the impact of vaping, which is negative for both youth and adults. And so in terms of what can the city do, we really appreciate, I'm speaking on behalf of Promedica right now and the Ebyde Center. We just appreciate when the city shares our monthly schedule of offerings at the Ebyde Center and on social media and on the website. It has made a difference in people being aware of the educational opportunities. And so indirectly, the city is supporting education around the topic of vaping and many, many other things that impacts people's health. So I wanted to say thank you for the promotion and and let you know that we are offering education in this community to help citizens be able to make good decisions about their health. So thanks so much.
Hearing no more public comments. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Or.
All in favor, say aye. Hearing is adjourned and we will begin in the regular reading at 7:25. Okay. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for April 15th, 2024. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mayor Heath? Present. Commissioner Banky? Not present. Commissioner Schwartz?
Present.
Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Miller?
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Present.
Commissioner Gauss?
Present.
All commission members present with the exception of Commissioner Banky. May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Banky?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath? Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion approved by unanimous vote. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath? Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion approved by unanimous vote. May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Castle, sorry, Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath? Yes. Consent agenda approved by unanimous vote.
Moving on to our regular agenda under special orders. Special order dash one is a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the special assessment role for delinquent rental property registration, inspection fees, parking assessments, improvements or abatements of public hazards on single lots in the city of Adrian and other miscellaneous invoices. At this time, I call the public hearing to order. Anybody wishing to speak may go to the podium or speak online as well. Hello? Yes, go ahead. Say, just state your name, please, and your address.
Hi. Yeah, my name is Vivian Sarabia. My address is 3061 Breckle. My father's name is Juan Rosales. I'm calling on behalf, I am the personal representative of my father. He passed away on February 11th of this year. And I'm calling, I'm calling about the $350 for the inspection fee that they would like to charge my father. The city of Adrian, which is Mr. Randall, I had been speaking with him since January. Our attorney is Mr. Fry. And we were going to set up time to do the inspection, but I decided that I had not had the paperwork yet for my father. And I have a sister that's living in that house. She authorized Mr. Randall to go in and I had not. And now they're billing my father, which has passed away, $350 for the inspection. So that is why I'm calling in regards to that, to find out exactly what we need to do concerning that, or if the people, the person that allowed Mr. Randall into the house, if they're liable for that payment. My father is, like I said, passed away on February 11th. He no longer is alive. I am the personal representative. And the people are still living there. The house has been deemed not to live in, but yet the city has let them live in there since January and we are already in April. And that one payment has been made on that house, but yet the city has allowed them to live there. And there was a sticker on the door that says, no one is to live there, but yet the city still allows it. So my question is, what do I do for that $350? Is my father Juan Rosales liable for that? Because, you know, he owns the property, but now I'm the personal representative. But then again, once again, he's passed away and I never authorized Mr. Randall to go into the house to do the inspection.
This is a public hearing, so we will not respond to you right now, but we have taken notes and the city administrator is going to be looking into that, but we just do not respond to public comment during the hearing.
Okay, I understand that, ma'am. That's fine. And then also I have been waiting quite some time to get the second inspection letter from Mr. Randall stating what needs to be up to code for the house. And I still have not received it. Like I said, it's been quite some time. So yes, please let them do what they need to do and get back with me as soon as possible. I'd like to take care of the situation as soon as I can. Can Yes, ma'am. It's at 113 North Center Street in Adrian, Michigan. Is the house that we're thinking about for the codes.
Thank you. That's what we wanted. Thank you.
Okay. All right, ma'am. So they will be reaching out to me then?
Yes, and they'll, they'll look into that as well. And they've been writing it all down. So yes, that's why we needed the address. Thank you.
All right. Do you need any further information, phone number or anything?
No, thank you. We'll be okay. It's, they, they have all of that. Thank you.
All right then. Thank you, ma'am. Bye bye.
Hearing no more comment. I call this public hearing closed. Moving on to special order dash two. It is a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the special assessment role for delinquent water and sewer charges. At this time, I called the public hearing open for special order dash two. Hearing no comments. I call the special hearing closed. Moving on to special order dash three. A public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the adoption of the fiscal year 2024-25 Budget and General Appropriations Act. At this time, I call the public hearing opened and we will hear any comments regarding the public, regarding the Budget and General Appropriations Act. Hearing no comments. I call the public hearing closed. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution R 24-014 is from Finance. It is a resolution to approve and adopt the fiscal year 2024-25 Budget and General Appropriations Act. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
I move that we adopt the resolution for the Budget and General Appropriations Act.
Second.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath? Yes. Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Resolution approved by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 24-015 is from Fire. It is a resolution to approve medical equipment service agreement with Stryker ProCare. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath? Yes. Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Resolution approved by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 24-016 is from Engineering Services. It is a resolution to award contract for street castings, EJ USA Incorporated. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath? Yes. Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Resolution approved by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 24-017 is from Administration. It is a resolution to approve maintenance agreement with MDOT for South Main pedestrian tunnel. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
For.
Are there any public comments on this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry and a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath? Yes. Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Resolution approved by unanimous vote.
Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those reports? It is now time for public comment. Just to reiterate, there's a three minute time limit, which you will see on the screen. And for the record, please state your name and address. We will begin inside the city chambers first. And after we have exhausted all public comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. We will begin now.
Jared Tim, Lake Street. I stand before you once again compelled to address the pressing issue of traffic safety in our city. Another tragic traffic incident has occurred along a stretch of stroud notorious for being dangerous. A pedestrian was hit and killed by the driver of a car at South Main Street in Metcalf. I watched a similar incident occur when I worked at a business at that intersection years ago. Traffic deaths are not merely unfortunate accidents, but the direct result of policy decisions. Regrettably, the choices made by our city's leadership over the years have contributed to eight fatalities in Adrian from 2017 to 2021. Our city regularly doubles the state average for pedestrian traffic deaths annually. In 2010, we exceeded the state average by roughly fourfold. Such statistics are unacceptable and demand immediate action. A stark comparison with Hoboken, New Jersey, another small US city, is difficult to ignore. Since 2017, Hoboken has achieved an impressive milestone, zero traffic deaths. This remarkable feat was accomplished through the implementation of complete streets and vision zero policies, initiatives that I have long advocated for in our city. These strategies employ low-cost, sustainable methods to swiftly enact change on streets, complemented by long-term solutions integrated during street repaving projects. Despite the loss of lives, the peril, on this perilous stretch of road, little effort has been made to enhance safety measures. Marked crosswalks are scarce, forcing pedestrians to either walk out of their way by half a mile or more to reach a controlled crossing or scurry across the five-lane stroud where they, when they feel it's safe. Placing pedestrians to either walk out of their way by half a mile or more to reach a controlled crossing or scurry across the five-lane stroud placing pedestrians at an unnecessary risk. The longer our leadership delays taking decisive action, the more lives will be needlessly lost. It is imperative that we heed credible suggestions for improving safety that have been repeatedly presented. Failure to do so will result in further tragedies, and the responsibility for these preventable deaths will rest squarely on your shoulders. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I would love to work together to prioritize safety and well-being of residents in our city. Thank you.
Good evening. Sewall's House, 175 Canterbury Street. In regards to the Adrian College Athletic Dome that is going to supposedly be put into our backyard, I had a couple items that I wanted to address. According to, I guess I'm confused, and I know you can't answer this question, but maybe, you know, if I see you downtown or somewhere, you can maybe give me this answer, but the zoning for Adrian College's ERO is the zoning, and that's educational research, and I don't know what the O is. I'm not quite sure how that ordinance works, that zoning ordinance. It seems like an athletic facility wouldn't fall into educational research. And probably there's some little thing saying there's an office in there or something so that they could do that. I don't know. Another, another concern of ours is to your commission because communication and transparency, I know are big buzzwords that we have been hearing a lot. And I know it was addressed in the pre-meeting, you know, that we were not informed of this as neighbors to come to a meeting, to listen to it. And when we came to the planning commission after this special meeting had been held, we were told two things that had been in the paper, in the classifieds. My family, we don't get the telegram. We buy it online, and we don't see all the classifieds. So that's, I don't really know the communication piece, that we should have been aware of that. The other thing was, we looked at the minutes from that meeting, and the meeting entailed two topics. The old LA Cafe turning into Credit Union and this dome. And the meeting was adjourned in 18 minutes. So my concern is, and that's why I've been wanting to get the video, is what did the commissioner say? So I applaud hearing a lot of discussion on the city commission about communication. We are longtime residents. We, we never have talked badly about the city. We support you all. You're all people, I know many of you personally. And I just, we just find this mind-boggling that we can have a 90-foot, at its highest peak dome that will block everything. We, my husband and I are getting our house appraised. We will follow if this has to go through what happens in our neighborhood to the value. It has to affect it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
We will now open up public comment to the Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
I have a number of announcements, events that are coming up that I just would like to highlight and make sure everyone is aware of. On April 27th, Hickman Hospital is having a drug take-back day from 10 to 2. On May 3rd, we have our first Fridays, our first closing down the street outdoor one. It's a Walkin' Wags fundraiser for the Humane Society, and that's when we will do our parade down Main Street of all the little pooches. On May 7th, get out to vote for the renewal of the library and also Adrian Public Schools, I believe it's the sinking fund. So that is coming up. Also, we have, the county has partnered with Bakker, and at the fairgrounds on May 11th, from 8 to 12 is a scrap tire and waste take-back day for there. Two more things. Erase the stigma. I am on the committee for that and have been for many years. It's a fundraiser to help support the Lenoy County Community Mental Health Agency. That is taking place downtown Adrian at the farmer's market on May 19th. Hope to see all of you there, and even if you aren't runners or walkers, we're looking for volunteers, so you're welcome to do that. And then we are having our citywide garage sale on May 31st through June 2nd. So get your items ready to go. And last year was a huge success and hope to have another one, another successful year this year. So that was a lot. But there's a lot of things coming up this, in the next month. So if you have any questions about any of those, I can answer some of them between all the meetings I've been attending, but I can help with dates and times, at least. Also, I'd like to thank Greg Elliott and the department heads for bringing us a budget that we can adopt and approve. I know that that is a challenge in today's society. We, we as commissioners want a lot more, but we only have this much money. And so the department heads, the department heads usually come and they want this amount of stuff. And when you only have this much money, decisions have to be made. So I want to thank the department heads and our city administrator for bringing a budget that we can support. So thank you all.
May I get a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Approved by unanimous vote.
We will be going into closed session then, and we will come out here, back out here to adjourn the meeting. Thank you. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.